Good evening and welcome to the meeting of the Skokie Village Board for Monday, September the 16th, 2019. This evening we will be led in the Pledge of Allegiance by Village Clerk Promote Shaw.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The meeting will come to order and the clerk will please call the roll.
Trustee Roberts?
Here.
Trustee Sutker?
Here.
Trustee Eldridge?
Here.
Trustee Bromberg?
Here.
Trustee Klein?
Here.
Trustee Gray Keeler?
Here.
Mayor Van Dusen?
Here. We have a quarrel. The next item on the agenda is approval of the consent agenda for this evening's meeting. A motion would be in order, Trustee Klein seconded by Trustee Gray Keeler. Is there anything on the consent agenda anybody would like to have removed? If not, call the roll, please.
Trustee Roberts?
Aye.
Trustee Sutker?
Aye.
Trustee Eldridge?
Aye.
Trustee Bromberg?
Aye.
Trustee Klein?
Aye.
Trustee Gray Keeler?
Aye.
Mayor Van Dusen?
Aye. The motion passes. With that vote, in addition to approving other items on the agenda, the board this evening welcomes Christopher Whitaker to our Telecommunications and Technology Commission. Christopher, if you'd stand just for a minute. I wanted to thank him for helping with the commission. I received an email from the chairman today and already Christopher's been put to work. He's working on a coding competition project up north. I think it's on wheeling.
Yes.
And what is the, what is the date?
October 12th?
I believe it's October 12th.
So, welcome. It's wonderful to have you and thank you very much for volunteering. And anybody who knows anything about coding, do not call me. I have no idea what it is. It has nothing to do with baseball, so I don't understand it, but Christopher knows everything about it. So, Christopher, thank you very much. Next item on the agenda are a couple proclamations. The first one this evening is one dealing with a subject that we don't like to talk about very much, but which needs to be talked about, and that is domestic violence. Whereas domestic violence is a prevalent societal problem harming victims, their children, family, friends, and communities at large. And whereas domestic violence knows no boundaries impacting women, men, and children of every age, race, ethnicity, economic background, sexual orientation, and belief. Whereas nearly one in three women and one in four men in the United States have experienced some form of physical violence by an intimate partner. And whereas many victims are deprived of their autonomy, liberty, and security, and face tremendous threats to their health, safety, and economic security, and the health, safety, and economic security of their children at the hands of their batterers. Whereas Domestic Violence Awareness Month provides an excellent opportunity for citizens to learn more about preventing domestic violence and to show support for the numerous organizations and individuals who provide critical advocacy, services, and assistance to victims. Whereas commendation should be given to agencies to assist victims of domestic violence and devote their efforts toward ending domestic violence throughout our state and nation. Now therefore I, George Van Dusen, Mayor of the Village of Skokie, do hereby proclaim the month of October 2019 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month and call upon the people of Skokie to raise awareness about the societal problem of domestic violence throughout our community and its devastating effects on families and communities. And I would like to invite the Director of the Domestic Violence Law Practice for North Suburban Legal Aid Clinic, Rebecca Weinberger, to please join me at the podium so I can present this to her.
(applause) Village of Skokie, thank you so much for having me. My name is Rebecca Weinberger and I'm the Director of the Domestic Violence Law Practice at the North Suburban Legal Aid Clinic. I want to thank the village for seeing the victims of domestic violence, for seeing the survivors of domestic violence. There are so many statistics about the pervasiveness of domestic violence, how it transcends class and race and gender, how it is underreported and combating it is underfunded. All of that is true and well documented, but today I would like to share just one statistic with you. In June 2018, our clinic, our tiny clinic, took in four new domestic violence cases. In June 2019, we took in 39. Domestic violence has not abated and will not abate without constant attention. With this proclamation, you have dedicated to not looking away until we have eradicated the cycles of power and control that define this particular type of violence that hurts every one of our communities. The North Suburban Legal Aid Clinic is your partner in shining this light and refusing to turn it off. Thank you so much.
Rebecca, thank you.[432.81][432.81](applause) Some of you have heard me note before that Skokie is home to over 100 different ethnic groups from all over the world, and we're proud of our diversity. As you look around the community, you will see signs, "Skokie welcomes everyone." And this evening, and then at the tail end of the meeting, we will be discussing three of the groups in the village who are very prominent and make us the great community we are. The first proclamation, in that regard, that I would like to read is regarding Filipino-American History Month. Whereas the earliest documented proof of Filipino presence in the continental United States was the date of October 18th, 1587. And if anybody was there and can verify that date, I would ask you to just raise your hand briefly. When the first Luzonos Indio set forth in Morro Bay, California, on board the Manila-built Gallean ship, Nuestro Señor de Bueno Esperanza. And whereas the Filipino-American National Historical Society recognizes the year of 1763 as the date of the first permanent Filipino settlement in the United States in San Moso Parish, Louisiana, which set in motion the focus on the story of our nation's past from a new perspective by concentrating on the economic, cultural, social, and other notable contributions that Filipino-Americans have made in countless ways toward the development of the history of the United States. Filipino-American servicemen and women have a longstanding history serving within the armed forces of the United States, from the Civil War to the present Iraq and Afghanistan conflicts, including the 250,000 Filipinos who fought under the United States flag during World War II to protect and defend our country. Whereas Filipino-Americans have contributed greatly to the fine arts, music, dance, literature, education, business, journalism, sports, fashion, politics, government, science, technology, and other fields in the United States, which enrich the landscape of our country. Whereas it is imperative for Filipino-American youth to have positive role models, to instill in them the importance of education, complemented with the richness of their ethnicity and the value of their legacy. Now therefore I, George Van Dusen, Mayor of the Village of Skokie, do hereby proclaim the month of October 2019 as Filipino-American History Month in the Village of Skokie, and do hereby urge the people of the village to observe Filipino-American History Month with appropriate programs and activities. And I'd like to invite Jellie Kirindang up to the podium.
Thank you, thank you. I know I do this year. Thank you very much.
Sure. If you'd like to say hello.
I'd like to thank everybody for supporting our community in our events. It's an honor and I'm proud to say that in 2010, we have our first celebration here in Skokie, and our very own mayor signed the proclamation ahead of our governor and the mayor of City of Chicago at that time. And I'm hoping that we can continue our celebration through the years. Everybody's getting old, so you know, I don't know if I can continue representing our community, but we'll try. I have here somebody who can take my place later on, and thank you again.
Please introduce your guest.
Dr. Evelyn Natibidad. She's the president, she's the chairman of the National Federation of Filipino-American Association in the Midwest.
Oh terrific, welcome.[741.00][741.00](applause) As everybody can see, Jellie's just very subtle in the way she's passing responsibilities on. Jellie, well done.
Yeah, I'll be behind her.
And also, a very distinguished and important group to all of us, great friends of ours. Whereas October the 2nd, 2019 marks the 15th anniversary of the installation of the statue of Mahatma Gandhi at the Heritage Park in Skokie. Whereas October the 2nd, 2019 marks the 150th birth anniversary of Mahatma Gandhi. And whereas the Village of Skokie joins with the Gandhi Memorial Trust by spreading the message of peace and nonviolence towards all. And boy, do we need that these days. Now therefore I, George Van Dusen, Mayor of the Village of Skokie, do hereby proclaim October 2nd, 2019 to be Peace Day and encourage all of the people of Skokie to appreciate the contributions of leaders like Mahatma Gandhi and the Reverend Martin Luther King, and the importance of peace and harmony among all the diverse communities living in our metropolis and in the Village of Skokie. And I'd like to invite Dr. Modi Satish Chander in Suresh Budwala up to the podium.
Mr. Mayor, please, can we take a picture? Can we come to both of you guys? Mr. Mayor, please, if you don't mind.
One more, Dr. Modi. One more, one more. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Thank you.
You can fight amongst yourselves.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you all the Board of Trustees. Thank you very much for recognizing and celebrating this 150th birthday of Mahatma Gandhi. Like you said, 15 years ago, you know, that was simply, idea came to us while sitting in one of the room that can we get this, some recognition of statue of Mahatma Gandhi here? And it was simply idea and sometime, you know, you just talk about it, you know, it's not going to happen. But however, the dream came true, and I can certainly, we all can thank the village here to encourage us, especially Mayor. We approached it many times, and not only Mayor, but even all of you for a lot of help. And finally, it was accomplished. And we are very proud that the statue is here, and we have been celebrating every year, and this is a special year, it's 150th birthday. Thank you very much again, and I thank you for my other members of the board who's also helped us a lot. Thank you again. Thank you, Doctor.[963.12][963.12](applause) Next item on the agenda is a very important renovation project, and I'd like to introduce Richard Kong, the Director of the Skokie Public Library, to share the news with us. Richard?
Thank you.
And would you introduce the other members from the library who are with you?
Yes, I will.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Before I begin, I would like to thank Mayor Van Dusen, the members of the board, and Village Manager John Lockerbie for inviting me to present this evening. I'd also like to acknowledge the members of our library, Board of Trustees, who are here with me tonight, Board President Mark Prospery, and Board Secretary Karen Purley. We have worked very long and hard on this project, and we're excited to share information about this interior renovation. So, let me begin here. So before I share information about the project, I just want to take a moment to note how the library has evolved over the past 60 years, particularly to highlight how the residents of Skokie have supported the library over the past 60 years. So, in 1960, the original first-story building of the current library was designed by a well-known architectural firm, Skidmore Owens &amp; Merrill, and went on to receive a National Library Design Award from the American Library Association and the American Institute of Architects in 1963. The building was 34,000 square feet and had a capacity for 150,000 square books. It was a one-story open plan design. Here's another picture of the children's room from that 1960 building. In 1971, Architect James Haven designed a two-story extension to the eastern side of the original building that increased capacity by 67,000 square feet. The current Mary Rodmacher program room and the petty auditorium were part of this design at the time. Does anyone remember these things? Had to throw in a photo of a card catalog. In 2001, the library began the process of adding an entire third story for the use by library staff, and also expanded slightly to the west of the original ground floor of the original 1960 building. The new entrance is what most people know today as the west entrance with the west parking lot. So I think it's clear that the library has always been supported by the Village of Skokie and its residents. The residents of Skokie have always recognized the importance of the library evolving to meet its residents' needs. There's always been an awareness in Skokie that as people's expectations of library services change and grow, so must the library's physical spaces and the way we serve people. Sociologist Eric Kleinenberg recently wrote a book called Palaces for the People, in which he writes, "Building places where all kinds of people can gather is the best way to repair the fractured societies we live in today." What he's talking about is the concept of social infrastructure, in which a community has the physical spaces that foster human connection, civic participation, social cohesion, and lifelong learning and discovery. In January of this, of next year, we are planning to take the next steps in which the library will evolve, as we launch a major interior renovation project that will transform and upgrade all of the public spaces on the first and second floors of the library. Not only will we recreate more functional and beautiful spaces for displaying our impressive collection of books and other materials, we will also enhance spaces for people to attend events, be creative, get work done, enjoy a snack or beverage while they're in the library, read, study, or simply relax and hang out with friends and neighbors. The project will cover approximately 85,000 square feet. Beginning in January, it will last 14 months over three phases, starting with the second floor. The good news is that we are committed to keeping the library open during the entire length of the project, only closing off areas that are under construction. We are fortunate to be working with a great team, including an architect named Andrew Berman, who's based out of New York, and our construction manager, Shales McNutt Construction. The project budget is estimated at 17.7 million, but will not increase the current tax burden on Skokie residents due to existing bond debt that is expiring next year. So there are many things I would like to highlight, but because of the limitations of time, I'll point out just some of the enhancements that we will try to accomplish with this project. One of the enhancements that we foresee is to bring new adult and teen makerspace and digital media studios to the residents of Skokie, and larger spaces for kids to engage in experiential learning and creative activities. This is a rendering from our architect of our second-floor makerspace and digital studio environment intended for teens and adults. Another enhancement that we anticipate is arranging collections and other materials in a more accessible, appealing, and browsable manner. Right now, this rendering shows our collections displayed along the walls of our main corridor that will be presented to visitors as they enter the west end of the building. And you'll see that most of the collections are face-out, browsable, very attractive and appealing for users. Here's another view of what that west entry will look like when you walk into the west entrance. We'll have plenty of displays of popular materials, most-wanted items, new items. You also see on the left-hand side, a new teen room for anyone from 7th grade through 12th grade for their use as well. Here's another rendering of the view from the east side, the east entrance from the Village Green, and as you walk in, you also see the displays and the collections surrounding Another enhancement that we anticipate is introducing a new café and vending area with indoor and outdoor seating areas. So in the warmer months during the year, people can enter this café courtyard where you can enjoy a meal, some coffee, or just sit down and relax and enjoy your book. This is also another courtyard that we have in the library currently, but it's really missed by a lot of people at the current time. So we're opening up this space. This is the youth courtyard on the first floor, and this will present a refreshed space for youth and their parents and their caregivers to engage in nature play activities and just enjoy the outdoors. This is a rendering of what the kids and the adults, who are the caregivers and parents, will see as they walk into the new kids' area. So the kids' area, the footprint will remain largely the same, but all of our spaces within the kids' area will be refreshed. We'll have new activity, larger activity rooms, a new STEM learning lab that's triple the size of what we currently have, a new Storytime room, and also, as you will enter, you'll have a fish tank on the right, and to the left, you'll see the courtyard that I just showed you. In addition to the kids' spaces, we'll also have spaces for adults. So this is a rendering of an instructional classroom where people will be able to come and learn about technology and about other topics that may interest them. It will also open up into a revamped business center. So on the second floor, if you've been to our business center, we'll still have that space, but it'll be reconfigured and more attractive and more functional for our business And we'll also have more spaces for people to gather and just meet people. This is a rendering of what many know to be the outside, the petty, the petty lobby or the vestibule. We're opening up the spaces there so that, and introducing more seating so that more people can meet their friends and neighbors before performances or after performances and just strike up a conversation. And as I mentioned earlier, we're introducing, I don't have a rendering of the teen space, but we're introducing a larger teen area that's, that will be equipped with a gaming area, a DIY STEM learning area. We'll have three study rooms in the teen, teen area, and we'll have lots of seating and collections for the teens as well, and they will always be staffed by our teen librarians. And on the second floor, we'll also have more comfortable seating and tables throughout the library, including the adult computers area, and as well as the entire eastern side of the second floor. Right now, whereas we have a very slim line of seating that's exposed to the natural light on the eastern side of the building, this will open up that area so that more people can benefit from all the natural light that's coming in from the Village Green. So I just want to thank you for your time, and I rushed through this, but there's a lot more information available on the library's website. If you go to skokylibrary.info/renovation, all of our information about the library's renovation project are there, including more renderings and square foot comparisons so you can really see what we're accomplishing. So thank you, Mayor.
Questions or comments? Trustee Roberts?
So, Richard, I appreciated your statistic that you shared with us, too. You had 763,000 people visited the library this past year?
Yes.
Wow, that's tremendous.
Yeah, we're a very busy, actively used library, and that's actually one of the reasons why we are committed to staying open during the length of the renovation.
And just to clarify your comment, so because you're retiring the prior bond issue from 2001?
Yes.
Is it, so the end result, when people get their property tax bills for the library levy, they won't see any increase. It'll be basically the same because?
That's right.
The new bond issue will just replace the old?
That's exactly right.
So there really won't be any increase in the library?
There won't be an increase on the current tax burden on any individual.
Great. Thank you. It looks beautiful, Richard.
Thank you very much.
And I remind everybody, you will be hearing about this again in about two minutes. Richard, thank you. The library is always one of the things that comes up, is one of the great jewels of the village. It's a gathering place where everybody in our community winds up. And I was reminded of this yesterday. Family was sitting around, we were eating dinner, and one of the members of the family asked, my granddaughter, who is four years old, most perfect person in the world, asked her, "Do you want to go to the library? We can go and get a video." I think it was Beauty and the Beast or something. And she said, "Oh yeah, but I get that, but I want to play with the refrigerator." And everybody sat there and said, "There's no refrigerator in the library." "Oh yes, there is, in the children's section." And she pointed out, and she said, "I'll go to the library if I can do that." And what a way to introduce a young person to how valuable libraries are, even those of us who remember books and things like that. But I just want to thank you because throughout the years that I've lived in Skokie, which goes back to the early 70s, it's always been a place, a refuge for me. And I don't want to tell anybody this, but when it gets a little hectic in the office, I sometimes like to just come over to the library, bring my study material with me, and just sit and go over it. And everybody there, it's not just the building, but it's the staff. It's just a first-rate, welcoming, wonderful group of people, and I want to thank you and everybody associated with the library for what you do.
Thank you, Mayor Van Dusen. You've always been so supportive of the library, we appreciate that. We appreciate that.
Well, it's easy to do.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And in relation to that, next item on the agenda is report of our village manager.
Thank you, Mayor Van Duzen and village trustees. Item A this evening is regarding a reimbursement resolution for this library renovation project. The Skokie Public Library is preparing for a major interior renovation project. The renovation will be funded through general obligation bonds. As the library does not have debt issuing authority, the village must issue bonds on the library's behalf as the official issuer, even though the repavement is specifically levied by the library. The resolution is being presented to the village board for your review and approval.
A motion of approval would be in order, trustee Roberts, seconded by trustee Sutker. Are there any comments or questions on the reimbursement resolution for the Skokie Public Library? If not, call the roll, please.
Trustee Roberts?
Aye.
Trustee Sutker?
Aye.
Trustee Ulrich?
Aye.
Trustee Brumberg?
Aye.
Trustee Klein?
Aye.
Trustee Gray Keeler?
Aye.
Mayor Van Duzen?
Aye, the motion passes.
Item B is regarding a Cook County Class 6B property tax incentive for 8051 Central Park Avenue and 3550 Oakton Street. Our economic development specialist, Leslie Murphy, is recommending this property tax incentive for this property located in the Skokie's eastern, east industrial area. The property has been partially vacant and underutilized since approximately 2010. The owners, Chicago Protective Apparel Incorporated, is a fourth-generation, family-run company which manufactures personal protective equipment and recently purchased this property. This evening, I'm happy to introduce some of the members from the company that have joined us. And so Myrna Sherman is here, Scott Sherman, John Morosky, and the attorney, Mark Rogers, is also here. And so, thank you for joining us this evening. So this group has purchased, has presented their plans to us to relocate their current forty thousand square-foot facility that's located at 3425 Cleveland and occupy the entire premises at this northeast corner of Central Park and Oakton Street, following significant planned improvements. In order to make this property suitable for the new industrial use, the applicant is planning to undertake major interior and exterior building improvements and site upgrades. The scope of the work includes a budget of a minimum of $3 million in comprehensive rehabilitation costs. The work will include interior demolition, complete roof replacement, repairs to walls, floors, and ceilings, new HVAC equipment, new demising walks, complete office build-out, plumbing and electrical upgrades, asbestos abatement, lighting, window replacement, parking lot improvements, landscaping, signage, other repairs, and professional design assistance. The cost of the interior rehab is expected to be close to what it costs to purchase the facility. Occupancy is planned for second quarter 2020. The assessed valuation and resulting property tax for this property have been declining for several years due to the overall deterioration within the partial vacancy of the building. The property has been underutilized since 2010. Granting a Class 6B designation for the property will provide the new owner with the necessary incentive to make the substantial investment to rehabilitate the building and create a functional industrial facility. For example, staff estimates that the taxes will increase from approximately one-hundred-and-sixty-three-thousand to approximately two-hundred-and-forty-thousand, even with this incentive in effect. Without the incentive, this level of rehabilitation cannot be justified. I concur with staff's recommendation and their assessment that this project is an excellent candidate for a Class 6B classification. I respectfully request mayor and board approval and a resolution authorizing this designation.
Before asking for the motion, I would like to ask Leslie if she would explain. It's a rather unique story, how Chicago Protective, Skokie-based, family, fourth-generation company in moving has caused some dominos to fall in the area, and it's pretty impressive. It involves Raja Foods and Grace Printing and Mailing. And maybe, Leslie, you could explain. It's a good story.
Yeah, as the process has been transpired over the last year, we're learning more and more good things about what's going to be happening when they finally did purchase the property and are planning to relocate to the 3550 Oakton spot. When they knew they were going to be purchasing the property, and correct me if I'm wrong, guys, they had already been in discussions with one of your neighboring businesses, and the Grace Printing Company had expressed a desire to expand and grow, and so they were able to work out an arrangement that had to be, everybody had to be patient because it took a while to finally get this property owner to finally close on the property. But in the meantime, Grace Printing is under contract now with your facility and expect to purchase it in the next month or six weeks?
That's right.
Okay. So once they move out of their existing facility, which is owned by Raja Foods, Raja Foods, we understand, will also be taking over that remaining space. So there will be no vacant space between those three buildings, and the 6B helped to trigger that whole process.
And we've got three businesses expanding.
Exactly, yeah.
I mean, it's a really great story.
More investment, more jobs, and no vacancies.
And we wanted to thank Chicago Protective for their vision.
Yes, they've been wonderful.
It's a real wonderful story. So a motion on the approval of the Cook County Class 6B property tax incentive for Chicago Protective would be in order. Trustee Sutker, seconded by trustee Alanka Ulrich. Are there any comments or questions? Trustee Roberts?
I would love to, if you wouldn't mind, just to hear just a little bit more about your business. And I understand from the memo we received that you hope, you have one-hundred-and-twelve employees now, and you hope to add more. If you wouldn't mind telling us a little bit about your business, please.
Sure. Yeah. As I stated, it is a
Use your microphone.
...fourth-generation company. We're a little over a hundred years old, and we moved out to Skokie a little over twenty years ago from Chicago. And we started off with a smaller building on Ridgeway, tripled our size when we went to Cleveland, and now this will be another tripling of size of space. We're looking to try to bring in about twenty or thirty new employees as quickly as we can. There's a lot of demand for our kinds of products. Our shop is actually a cut-and-sew operation, so we have the fabric, we cut it, and we sew it into garments for steelworkers, for welders, for different industries typically dealing with flame resistance or cut protection and things like that. But this is a greatly-needed space for us, and the building that we're moving into, it is, it needs a lot of TLC, but I know that it's going to end up being a great home for us for many years to come.
And you even have one, is there a protective glove for chefs when they're dicing?
We do, we do, and then also
Explain that one, that is fascinating.
Probably the more popular is food processing. So it's almost like a steel mesh glove, something that you almost see on TV, you'll see it, people diving with sharks and whatnot, those metal suits. But it's used in food processing, so chopping, flaying fish and whatnot, and protecting you from being cut. So not a lot of dexterity. It's a kind of, it's a unique item. It's a little bit more obscure for us. But our, yeah, our main line is really going to most of steel mills around the south Chicago, Indiana, in that area, and for welders and whatnot. And then also to the Skokie Fire Department.
Yeah.
Okay, there we go. The chiefs, the chiefs in the back? Yeah, one afternoon, my assistant, Vicky Varga, and I headed out to try and discover where is and what does Chicago Protective do? And we just dropped in, and we spent most of the afternoon, something like two hours, just walking around, and it just, it's fascinating. If you do get the chance, I'm good, I would invite you. Of course, it's easy for me, but if you get a chance, just take a look. It's the kind of business that we all know about, but yet again, we don't think about. And it's just great to have you, and we're wonderfully proud of the work you do, so thank you.
Thank you very much.
Call the roll, please.
Trustee Roberts?
Aye.
Trustee Sutker?
Aye.
Trustee Ulrich?
Aye.
Trustee Brumberg?
Aye.
Trustee Klein?
Aye.
Trustee Gray Keeler?
Aye.
Mayor Van Duzen?
Aye, the motion passes. Congratulations.
The next item is regarding a report from our litter task force and a proposed action plan. In order to further the village's efforts to prevent, reduce, and eliminate litter, a task force was established. The chairperson of the task force is Jeff Berman, and he's going to present the report this evening.
How's everybody tonight? I want to thank you, all of you, for granting me this time today and for supporting the project. We greatly appreciate it. I'm pleased to present to you the final report and action plan of the litter task force. This report represents the culmination of six months of intensive efforts on the part of the task force in response to our charge, and the goals of the litter task force were as follows: to identify the causes of litter, clean up litter, deter littering behavior, reduce litter, and beautify Skokie. The task force was charged with creating an action plan to address these stated goals. I'd now like to give some background in terms of our process as we went through the various meetings to get to the point, and then talk about the action plans that were developed. Early on the process, the task force reviewed key information that was supplied by Keep America Beautiful, or KAB. It's a national organization. I'm sure some of you remember, or many of you remember, from days past on commercials where they talked about litter. This information indicated that the litter cleanup costs the United States more than eleven-point-five billion dollars per year. Additionally, the presence of litter in a community is said to reduce property values by seven percent, and the task force also reviewed their 2009 national survey, and the survey supports the conclusion that about eighty-five percent of littering is the result of individual attitudes. Therefore, it is the apparent changing individual behavior is the key to preventing litter. It was also noted that a strong contributor to litter is the prevalence of litter prior. For those reasons, the task force felt it important to develop an action plan to approach, an action plan approach that focuses not only on education and public information to support behavior change, but also to focus on litter abatement activities as critical inducement to this behavior. As a starting point, the group observed the importance of performing a litter audit or measurement process. The village has both a starting point in this way and a future baseline of measurement for determining progress as we move through implementation of the action plans on litter abatement of behavior. The task force reviewed the benefits of joining Keeping America Beautiful and using their measurement device, but it was price prohibitive, so the decision was made to create an internal device structured after what some other cities around the country have done. The task force also noted many of the program elements for litter abatement and awareness are currently in place and existing within the village today. Notably amongst those are the village's Clean Green Skokie, as well as the village's revitalization adopted street program. The task force also reviewed litter abatement services currently offered by village public work staff and its contractors, as well as services provided by Skokie Park District for its properties and facilities. The task force also heard presentations from key village staff with involvement in various aspects of the issue. These include a consultation with the village corporation council's office with regard to current village ordinances relating to litter, as well as consultation with staff of Skokie Park District with regard to park district ordinances and enforcement capabilities of park monitors. The task force heard a presentation by village property standards division supervisor Terry Olean, who highlighted the village's current approach to litter regulation and enforcement with regard to conditions on private properties. And the task force also held discussions with police chief Anthony Scarpelli to understand what the police department's ability is to enforce littering ordinances both currently and in the future. The task force noted that the importance of ensuring there are ordinances that focus on the actions of individuals versus solely on commercial or residential property owners through property standards. A group of task force members will continue to work along corporation council's office to further explore and recommend ordinance changes relating to litter enforcement. Additionally, as an outgrowth of these discussions, the task force noted the importance of exploring options for positive reinforcement, which incentivizes businesses to work towards litter abatement. The task force discussed extensively the role of education in affecting individual and group behavior, and these discussions included consideration of components relating to the development of a slogan as part of a marketing campaign. The possibility of developing a curriculum for local schools to provide litter education and a change in behavior on the part of children and their parents, and the opportunity to promote contests among schools as a means of generating excitement and interest in the community. Through the course of these discussions, the task force recognized the difficulty of creating a formal curriculum would be utilized in schools. As such, the task force is focused on the development of prepackaged marketing program and materials that would enable individual schools and teachers to participate if they so choose. As litter reduction activities or as contests among schools or classes with recognition from the village in some form, the marketing program would also include promotion of personal responsibility, as well as village-wide education on reduction in the usage of common litter items such as straws and napkins and plastics. And the task force believes that the slogan for the campaign should continue to be Clean Green Skokie, as that has been not only an effective slogan but also readily known within the community. The task force also discussed promoting litter abatement and awareness with other groups in the community, and these included the linkage of litter abatement activities with healthy walking activities. The task force members spoke to representatives of Skokie Hospital, who indicated a possible interest in combining and working with the task force on promoting walking and collecting litter as an activity that benefits both the individual and the community. There are also possible lineages with the park district via summer camps, as well as local and religious institutions. Engagement in these various groups can help robust community-wide awareness and engagement. And the culmination of these extensive discussions was the formalization of a recommended marketing strategy, along with a suggested budget to fund the various components. The strategy and budget have been presented to the village manager, John Lockerbie, and I believe has been accepted. And before I wrap up with the conclusion, what I wanted to do was talk to you about, just quickly, about the activities or the objectives that we anticipate to pursue. And I suppose what I left out is part of the program is that we branched out into subgroups covering various aspects of the study, and all of those subgroups and all those members have agreed to continue to participate and move these activities along. The first subcommittee is to review all current village and park district regulations and ordinances to determine level effectiveness, determine proper methods of enforcement for current regulations and ordinances fully implemented in enforcement. So the first half of this has already been done. Corporation Council has done a search and printed out all of the current ordinances that deal with nuisance and litter, as well as the park district, and so the next phase of that would be to work with those two bodies to work on regulations or in changes that need to be made. The next subcommittee was to did a village-wide litter audit, developed the audit, and then did the audit to not only identify some measurement for current level of litter, but also identify causes and target areas. The first round of this has been done, and it was just recently completed. I think it was conducted on September 3rd, if I'm not mistaken, a very good day. And we will hopefully get those findings to the task force and have them go through them next and see what it is that we can glean in terms of adjusting the strategy. Next was to conduct a wide audit, a village-wide audit of how the issue is currently being addressed in the different schools. This was a subcommittee again, and that was already completed, and we are in the process of constructing some prefabricated materials for the schools to utilize and activities. And the next was include campaign village-wide, this is under the marketing group, include a campaign village-wide education to reduce consumption of items likely to become litter. Plastic bags, straws, and napkins, basically take them out of the pipeline as potential litter. This is in the process currently. There are various posters and other materials that are being distributed through businesses and restaurants through town, and will be a part of the marketing plan going forward and is underway. So on behalf of the members of the task force, in closing, I'd like to thank the five So on behalf of the members of the task force, in closing, I'd like to thank the following members of the task force for their significant contributions to the completion of this action plan and report. We have Katie Bulgrin, Carol Singer, Margaret Clausen, Edie Sue Sucker, Ann Tennis, Karen Gray Keeler, Jody Weinberg, George Isacco, Kenneth Mantel, Cindy Whitaker, Max Lenkert, Matt Messenger, and Maureen Yanes. And I would also like to thank the village manager for creating this task force, and for all of you, for all of your support through this process. We appreciate it. Thank you very much.
It's been a lot of work. And Jeff, I want to thank you for staying steadfast throughout. It's not an easy job, and it certainly isn't the most glamorous job there is in municipal government, but it's very important to our businesses. And does anybody have any comments or any questions? Two of our trustees were on the commission, so thank you. Trustee Sutker.
Jeff, I really want to thank you. I think the task force was such an active, fun committee to be on. I mean, we watched it move and very quickly, and good ideas, and a great group of people from all --
It was a great group, thank you.
-- from all different walks of life, teach, you know, the schools, the businesses, trustees, and so thank you for letting me participate.
Well, thank you. I appreciate it.
Who knew that litter could be fun?
Litter could be fun. Thank you all. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you. Item D, E, F, G, and H were approved as tonight's consent agenda. Item I is regarding a request for executive session pursuant to Section 2, Paragraph C5 and C6 of the State of Illinois Open Meetings Act. A closed session is requested and to adjourn therefrom.
A motion is in order. Trustee Bromberg, seconded by trustee Gray Keeler. Call the roll, please.
Trustee Roberts.
Aye.
Trustee Sutker.
Aye.
Trustee Elrich.
Aye.
Trustee Bromberg.
Aye.
Trustee Klein.
Aye.
Trustee Gray Keeler.
Aye.
Mayor Wendus.
Aye, the motion passes.
That completes my report this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Next item is report of our corporation council, Michael Larch.
Thank you, mayor, trustees. Good evening, everyone. Items A, B, C, D, E, F, and G on my report were ordinances which were on the consent agenda at the beginning of this meeting and were adopted at that time. Item H is on agenda for first reading tonight. This is a companion ordinance to those pieces of legislation passed earlier dealing with consent on the consent agenda dealing with cannabis. In particular, this ordinance will amend Chapter 46 of the Skokie Village Code in order to set the annual fees for the retail sale of cannabis. The initial fee will be $20,000, and each subsequent renewal will be $5,000. Mayor, this would be back on the October 7th agenda for second reading and adoption.
And this is consistent with the way we've handled liquor licenses?
Correct. We don't like to draw direct correlation in that intent, but it is modeled after proper application by businesses to the village, taking into account costs and other matters.
Thank you. So it will be back for second reading and adoption at the board meeting on October the 7th, 2019. Are there any questions in the meantime? If there should be any of anybody, please get in touch with our corporation council.
Thank you. That will complete my report for this evening.
This evening, we have three, or four, excuse me, planned commission cases. Three of them, B, C, and D, on the agenda are together. Plan Commission case 2019-20 is a special use permit. And Chairman Paul Luke of our Plan Commission with Peter Pire.
Good evening, mayor, members of the board. My first case is case 2019-20P, a special use permit at 4830 Dempster Street. At the August 1st meeting of the Plan Commission, we reviewed the request of McDonald's USA LLC on behalf of McDonald's Corporation, Verna Bazazian Trust, and None Better Property Management Company Incorporated to amend an existing special use permit for a limited service restaurant with two drive-through lanes in the B3 district to modify the existing site plan and landscaping plan. Relief is being requested from Chapter 118-52 to allow a ground sign within the required 15-foot site distance triangle, and from Chapter 118-212, item I and I, to allow continuous curbing less than six feet from and parallel to any property line adjacent to a street frontage. The petitioner's request is being triggered by an upcoming IDOT road construction project for the intersection of Dempster Street, Niles Center Road, and Dempster Street and Skokie Boulevard. IDOT needs to acquire approximately 530 square feet at the southeast corner of the subject site in order to increase the radius of the curb at the northwest corner of Dempster and Niles Center. As a result, the public sidewalk, fire hydrant, traffic signals, street light pole, and existing McDonald's ground sign will all need to be relocated. No changes are being proposed to the appearance of the sign itself. The flagpole will be placed to the west of the menu board facing the western drive-through lane. The petitioner requested that a recommendation of the staff requiring that ballards be installed along the east side of the outer drive-through lane to be removed. Staff had indicated or included that condition in order to further discourage vehicles from entering the drive-through lanes from the east. The petitioner explained that the ballards would interfere with delivery truck maneuvers. Staff responded that when vehicles attempt to enter the drive-through lane from the wrong direction, they end up blocking the one-way eastbound driveway. Adding portable or flexible ballards would channelize the Q lane and further discourage drivers from incorrectly accessing the drive-through lanes. Staff mentioned that a similar problem also exists at the McDonald's at Two Way Avenue and Niles Center Road. Subsequent to the Plan Commission meeting, the petitioner submitted a letter responding to staff's recommendation that ballards be installed at the drive-through. The petitioner explained that ballards cannot be installed because they would obstruct the circulation of delivery trucks within the site and create maintenance and liability issues. A delivery truck circulation plan prepared by petitioner was submitted. As an alternative, the petitioner proposed painting additional striping and pavement arrows and markings which would reinforce that the driveway is a one-way northbound only. Condition 1A of the Plan Commission recommendation has been revised to include this proposal. The petitioner's approval for relocate a ground sign past the, or was approved by the Prince Commission after June 12th meeting. Plan Commission therefore recommends that by a vote of nine ayes and no nays, at the petitioner's request, be amended and approved.
Okay. A motion on the special use permit for 4830 Dempster, Plan Commission case 2019-20P is in order. Trustee Ulrich, seconded by trustee Roberts. Are there any comments or questions? If not, call the roll.
Trustee Roberts.
Aye.
Trustee Sutker.
Aye.
Trustee Elrich.
Aye.
Trustee Bromberg.
Aye.
Trustee Klein.
Aye.
Trustee Gray Keeler.
Aye.
Mayor Wendus.
Aye, the motion passes.
Okay. My next three cases are related.
Okay, Paul, if I could just take one second very quickly. We have a special guest this evening, who I suspect is related to the next three cases. Bishop Paulus, welcome. It's wonderful to have you. His excellency is with the Assyrian Church, and wanted to thank you for coming this evening and being with us. Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. I do have three cases that are related. Case 2019-26P is zoning map amendment. Case 2019-27P is site plan approval, and case 2019-29P is special use permit. Again, although these cases are related, I'd like to mention that in case 2019-26P, zoning map amendment, I think this case needs to be heard and approved before I move on to the other cases.
Sure.
At the August 13th, 15th meeting of the Plan Commission, we reviewed the request of Holy Apostolic Catholic Assyrian Church at the East Diocese of North America to amend the zoning map to change the zoning district for 50/50 Church Street from an R2 family and an R4 multifamily housing to B2 commercial. The petitioner desires to rezone the subject site, which presently contains a vacant community center, in order to make the zoning suitable for use as a church and allow for office uses on the sites in the future. The Plan Commission concurs with staff's recommendation to grant zoning map amendment.
A motion on the zoning map amendment for 50/50 Church Street, Plan Commission case 2019-26P is in order. Trustee Klein, seconded by trustee Gray Keeler. Are there any comments or questions on the zoning map amendment? If not, call the roll.
Trustee Roberts.
Aye.
Trustee Sutker.
Aye.
Trustee Elrich.
Aye.
Trustee Bromberg.
Aye.
Trustee Klein.
Aye.
Trustee Gray Keeler.
Aye.
Mayor Wendus.
Aye, the motion passes.
So I'll proceed with the two cases here, which are related. Case 2019-27P is site plan approval. At the August 5th meeting of the Skokie Plan Commission, we reviewed the request for site plan approval in order to operate a religious assembly use on a site that is one acre or greater in size in a B2 commercial zoning district. All uses of business zoning districts over one acre in size require a site plan approval. This case only covers a site plan. The petitioners will use the site as is with minor changes to the parking lot that will increase handicap and biking parking. There is no driveway access from Lawler Avenue, and parking is restricted on that street. Both driveways on Church are proposed to allow both egress and ingress. Currently, it is a one-way circulation. In the short term, the petitioner intends to convert the existing gym into a 300-seat prayer hall and a dance studio and social assembly spaces into a fellowship hall. The plan also includes classroom space for children's Bible study and adult religious education, administrative offices, and retention of a 260-seat theater. For now, the handball courts and pool will remain, but will be unused. Looking ahead, they would like to change the pool use into a gym for their youth members, basketball, and volleyball. Additionally, they would like to bring in elderly members who are in nursing home facilities to come in and have tea and coffee, and socialize with younger congregants and other church parishioners on Sundays or weekdays. They would also like a new summer camp in the future for this and neighboring parishes, and possibly move the Assyrian Food Festival from Morton Grove. In case 2019-29P, special use, at the Plan Commission reviewed a request for a special use permit for a religious assembly in a B2 commercials district. The Assyrian Church of the East is proposing to operate a church with a 300-foot seat sanctuary, which would be expanded to an additional 100 seats for special uses. There is also a 260-seat theater that will likely be used for Bible study, but not during services. The office area will be used for clergy, administrative personnel on weekdays, and certain Saturdays. Long-term, the pool area will be changed to a gym. The building will also accommodate social activities for seniors, summer camps, and for this parish and neighboring St. Andrew and St. George and St. Mary parishes. The Plan Commission determined that the parking requirement for up to 400 seats is 178 off-street parking spaces in the case 2019-28P parking determination. There will be at least 261 parking spaces on the site after lots are required, after the lots which will be repaired and restriped. Parking is adequate to accommodate the use and other proposal. Additionally, the Assyrian -- oh, getting back to the food festival again, confirming that the wedding, they also confirmed that weddings will be held, but not banquets, and the future use is of the second floor, for second-floor offices. Plan Commission approves the special use request.
We have two Plan Commission items before us. Site plan approval, which is Plan Commission case 2019-27P. A motion is in order. Trustee Ulrich, seconded by trustee Roberts. Are there any comments or questions on the site plan approval? If not, call the roll.
Trustee Roberts.
Aye.
Trustee Sutker.
Aye.
Trustee Elrich.
Aye.
Trustee Bromberg.
Aye.
Trustee Klein.
Aye.
Trustee Gray Keeler.
Aye.
Mayor Wendus.
Aye, the motion passes. And then finally, Plan Commission case 2018-29P, special use permit, the Assyrian Church of the East. Motion is in order. Trustee Gray Keeler, seconded by trustee Klein. Any comment or questions on the special use permit? Being done, call the roll.
Trustee Roberts.
Aye.
Trustee Sutker.
Aye.
Trustee Elrich.
Aye.
Trustee Bromberg.
Aye.
Trustee Klein.
Aye.
Trustee Gray Keeler.
Aye.
Mayor Wendus.
Aye, the motion passes. Congratulations and welcome.
I'd like to add that the meeting that night was very well-attended, and all the members of the church are very eager to come to Skokie and worship. Thank you.
I understand it was standing room only.
Yes, it was.
And --
We even had people in the lobby and in the parking lot.
So congratulations. We're proud to have you, you're great residents of the village, and we look forward to continuing to work with you. Welcome. Next item, the concluding item, is citizen comments. Is there anybody who wishes to address the village board? If not, I would like to make one announcement and then briefly talk about a friend of all of ours who passed away this past week, Al Nathan. Al was a true pioneer. He loved the village of Skokie and was one of our biggest boosters. But he took a unique way for its time. It's now become rather ordinary, I'm afraid. But Al was about 20 years ahead of his time. He created a local cable television interview show called Skokie People Speak. And he produced it, he choreographed it, he did everything by himself. And he produced over 250 shows. And you never knew exactly what topic Al was going to come up with. I'm not sure, but I think I had the record. I appeared on close to 50 of his shows. And Al was nothing if not fastidious. Before every show, he would call the people who were going to be on the show with him, and he would go through his itinerary in excruciating detail. And you weren't quite sure always. I remember one of the shows, Al was going to talk about the flood control program in the village. the village, and it was still relatively new, so it was a topic. And in the midst of it, he asked whether any of us, I think there were three of us, three guests that night, had read anything recently on dams that were being used in China to generate electricity. And we all kind of looked at each other, and we asked, where did that come from? And he said, oh, I just read it this afternoon, and I thought it was interesting. And he then went on to talk about the generation of electricity on one of the major rivers in China. We did get the flood control, and he asked wonderful questions, but that was just a little bit of it. He also went out of his way to publicize our businesses, our not-for-profit community, and he had on the most marvelous guests. I should have asked the library when they were here. I'm not sure if the shows were archived, but it would be a lens through which you would get to know and understand Skokie in the 1980s, 90s, and at the turn of the century. He was warm-hearted, and we will all miss him, and just a perfect example of somebody in the village who decided on his own that he had an idea that he wanted to execute. And we will all, and we do, miss Al. Also, some of you may have received a little something in the mail this late last week. When you got it, it was from the assessor of Cook County. Some of you may not have opened it. It took me a day before I opened it. However, we got a briefing last week from our Cook County Commissioner, Larry Sufferton, and he will be hosting two property tax assessment information programs. One will be tomorrow evening in the Skokie Public Library at 6:30. He will have the representatives from the property tax appeals office there to explain how you can appeal your assessment. The other working session will be on Tuesday, September 24th. It'll be from 10:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m., also at the library. The second one will be in the Business Center, and this will be for anybody who wishes to attend and get direct assistance in filling out the forms and what you need to do to appeal your assessment. I highly recommend that you attend either or both of these sessions. They're informative, but also there can be a benefit in getting your assessment reduced if you think it's excessive. On the Commissioner's website, he also has a couple reports explaining how Assessor Kegy has reached his conclusions. So I encourage everybody who is interested in this to either get in touch with Commissioner Sufferton or the Niles Township Administration on Main Street. The Township Assessor, Scott Begnell, is also eager to help anybody who wishes to appeal their assessment. So if any, if there are no further comments or questions, I will turn to trustee Roberts. It's your turn, trustee.
Mayor, and by the, our wonderful Skokie Library has archived 250 of Al Nathan's-
They did archive them.
...on YouTube, so you can see Al still alive and still with us, so I move we adjourn for an executive session.
We adjourn for an executive session.